Three bet bluff from the big blind.
What's up, everybody? This is the purple coaching study session. Today we're looking at three bed bluffing from the big line. Forty big line against that button. So we're done it. We're only gonna have probably. We're gonna start with like the bluff portion of our range pre flop. So here we are, A six off. We get this type of board. What do you guys wanna do?
Well, first off, when you three bet a hand like A six off and you get a flop like this, this is no longer a bluff in my mind. Straight value town.
Right. So what do you wanna do?
I wanna bet big.
What kind of side?
I could go fifty percent here sometimes. Actually, I don't know, man. It gets kinda hard if you go fifty percent.
What about looking at the button in the eyes?
Saying I'm all in?
I'm saying.
Exactly.
Just say, here's my chips.
Do you have what it takes? To be on this table? Or not? That's what you asked.
Can you play with the big boys?
Cohones or no cojones? You think the button has what it takes or not?
I don't have.
I mean.
What it takes.
I know you're blocking it, but he does have six, seven in range. And there is a flush draw, so.
He's got top two in range. He's got nine eight suited, right? Still only two combos, but he's still got them. He's got all the sets.
Well, that being said, it is an eight, nine, which is pretty close to Jack ten. Maybe you do just pile sometimes.
Alright, I'm glad I was able to convince you. Sometimes it just goes.
Thirty-four percent of the sometimes.
Fifty percent was good as well, Galen.
Yeah, on the, on the smaller end of things. The important thing is it is a big bed spot.
So.
How big? That's up to you.
But what I like about this is the buttons definitely over folding.
So looking at this, this is the. Big blind strategy on this board.
Mm hmm. Yeah, vulnerable strength. And uh. Low equity draws. Just kinda go bananas.
Yeah, right?
If you look at what the button supposed to call with, people are definitely not gonna defend enough. Versus that bet as well, which makes it um. Nice, makes it worth it to me. Actually, I was like, man, this is crazy. You know, when I saw it, so let's see what they gotta call with. I'm like, yeah, I don't think my place is calling that wide.
You don't bet your flush, it flush draws.
This is pre flop.
Oh.
Oh, pre flop, okay. Oh, this is on the flop.
There's a flop, yeah. Look at that.
Uh, right, 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 right. This is the range we three bet. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, only the ace jack.
The other ones, we don't three bet our suited combos much, so we don't have, yeah.
Right, so when we push. When we push.
He's calling flush straws and top pairs and over pairs.
And then third pair.
The five, six, I think we get called by.
Except for Russians or Brazilians take up, not gonna call five X.
Feel like that uh, that king five suited is a fairy tale. King seven of hearts is a fairy tale. It's a misclick, man.
Even like ace title, ace jacko, I think the most, a lot of people fold even with the spade, even ace queen like without a spade or a heart, I think. Well, that might be all they have there.
Ace, queen of hearts, ace, jack of hearts. I, if I, if I get, if I respect the player and I get like a big, big chunky bet, I might actually call.
When jacko. Like, people fall, I think.
Put it in. And then, oh my goodness.
Jack ten gets there.
He hit the straight, did he hit straight flush?
He had open ender and a straight flush.
He hit.
That one you're getting called by.
Yeah, yeah, fifty percent.
Feels like, we feel like a genius jamming now.
So after this, and I was like, okay, we're gonna have some jams here. So this is the flop. Uh, report. And then if, if we look at this here, this is the first thing that I thought was really weird. Look at this, you're jamming quite a lot here.
Hmm.
On this scenario. You have any jobs after you three bet, when you see that? When you see that?
Something I gotta learn, but unfortunately I can't stick around.
So. Pretty weird textures, right? First, let's look at the checks. So. Check a lot on.
Completed equity contested boards.
Uh, flush draw boards. That have completed equity.
Yeah, basically the ones that just absolutely smashes calling range.
Especially middle slash high ones. Queen, ten. Jack, nine. Okay, so we check a lot of this. Is there like uh, or check or just blast? Jack ten, seven with the flush draw. And then it turns out. We go all in a lot on this texture. Isn't that thing on the other ones? A little bit.
Nine, five, eight's gonna be down there.
Right, right. So this is what we check a lot on?
We don't check a lot on nine, five, eight.
And that was we bet a lot on. So low boards. A side boards. A lot of A size. Lot of boards that pair that misses range.
Yeah, misses like your three bet range and his call. I guess you have more seven X and six X than he does calling. If you're appropriately polarizing. So you don't really need a big bet. Same thing with the ace high dry. So it's like it connects really well with your value portion. Yeah, I mean, this, I can't get behind that.
Look at three, four, five.
Uh, is he like? Is he like jamming like pocket eights and better pre flop?
Uh, he should be doing a lot of jamming with pairs. I don't even think it's pocket eights. I think it's more polar. Like, I think he's even doing like threes, fours and fives.
Pocket tens.
Yeah, so it's like.
Oh wait, no, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's just flattening like hi- he's flattening the nuts. But hi- his jamming range is polarly constructed. I'm not gonna lie though, like those eights, eights or sevens, eights, nines, I, I probably. I'm, I'm nearly full frequency jamming those, I think.
I'm with like queens as well.
Mm hmm. It's just hard to play post flop, even though you have position. It's just.
Yeah. The cool boards. Ace, three, two, time to get bluffed off my hand.
And you know, it's kind of interesting because that's first a really polar range where. I would be interested to see what HRC has to say. For someone who's not appropriately polarizing a range from the big blind. Like if they're not finding the, the king sixes of the world, you know? How that might change.
As most people aren't.
Yeah, 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 exactly. That's why it's an interesting question to me. Maybe when the sim is done, I'll third in the math machine. That's gonna be a while.
So the. The re- the adjustment that you're making against humans here is you're, you're trying to find all the king sixes in the world. But you're trying to find not all the calls in the world that GTO responds to the king sixes with.
Yeah, that's it, Scotty. That's it.
So the way I understand general strategy here much sure, but like it's Jack ten, check ten eight, Jack ten nine. Then eight, the Jack ten, it's like. Two or three high cards with a flush draw, right? Middle, it's like middle cards, right? High middle cards? So if we look at this here, these, this is two high middle cards with a flush draw.
Well, there's no completed equity, so this is like, you go bananas here. For the exact same reason where he's like, a small bet makes no sense.
Three changes everything.
Well, yeah, if you walk through it, it makes a lot of logical sense. On these textures, he has flop straights. So you can't just be completely disrespectful because you're gonna be hemorrhaging your precious EV.
You see this one?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it just because you can find an outlier doesn't mean that like the overarching theme doesn't stay true. Yeah, I mean, it happens like that sometimes.
I think we're checking a ton here, like. Fifty to sixty percent and we're gonna bet big a lot with that.
I would agree. That's, that's kinda what I'm working through too.
The pattern is true, we check a lot.
Yeah, how big do we bet?
It does actually bets a small quite a bit here, but um, it's, it's, it's throwing this into the check range mostly.
Okay, and then let's look at range quickly.
Yeah, I, I bet there is some pretty large girthy bets here.
Cause we have a ten, right? So the ten or ten wants to bet a little bit, but.
Maybe not. Maybe there's something about it being the eight, maybe because it's a two gapper. You don't really have like the really, really big bets I was expecting to see.
We do bet more than we check this hand.
Wait, wha- what kind of sizing were you expecting?
Like, I mean, even some jamming, some one hundred, some seventy-five sometimes.
Why?
I think we need to be deeper to see those sizings. Like, I mean, the jamming, I think we'll see on some board textures. This one's not quite it.
To jam, you'd, you'd need like a queen, jack, eh, nine.
Or like Jack ten, six.
Queen, Jack, Queen, Jack nine has an a mountain of completed equity. I think you see zero jamming on Queen, Jack.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think like Jack ten, six.
Queen, Jack, queen, Queen, Jack.
Uh, five. Queen, Jack nine with a flush draw.
No.
No jamming.
No jamming.
Five percent check.
Yeah, but that's because there's a ton of straights.
It's gonna be like Jack ten X. Wow. This is cool.
Six, five, four, that's.
Yeah, low connected rainbow.
So there's Jack ten eight.
I see Jack ten eight. That's what I was just looking at too.
Totally misses their range.
I mean, not really, but.
They, they don't have flop straights, I think is the, the key thing there. So like, if you look at a calling range, they shouldn't have Jack. They shouldn't have Jack eight. So like, what's the three bet calling range from the button versus the big blind?
Means seven, eight, nine rainbow. He definitely has ten jack. Um, six, five, four, he has seven, eight suited. Ten, nine, seven, he has eight jack suited. They're still, I mean, they're not large portions of the range, but they're still in range.
Six, seven, eight, so there would be eight, nine. Yeah, in general, though, it looks like it's just not a huge part of the range.
Yeah.
The straights.
Yeah, I'm not just ripping. On a eight high board with the straight.
Are we, we're, are we folding two big blinds and a twenty big blind pot?
What kind of level of disrespect this is, Scotty?
He did it in position.
This is so miserable.
You win, bud. I'm gonna, I'm gonna relinquish my hand. Look at that, one point two, no, one point two nine. It's not, not even close.
You, you can't, you can't fold to a check. A queen is good, man.
That's a, that's a good philosophy. You can't fold to a check. And that's basically what that is. Now look at that, now you have direct equity.
You lead?
Oh, leading is actually an interesting idea.
You jam?
Now you can't jam. Jamming seems crazy.
We have hearts. We have a ten. We have a gutter.
Spade, I don't hate leading. I think it's reasonable. I don't care about trying to get a shut on with this hand.
Alright.
It would have to be very small. I would go fifteen percent or check here.
I'll check him.
Why is it forty percent here?
Yeah, I think forty is too bad.
What is?
If you bet, if you bet four, I mean, if you bet forty, he's just gonna jam on you sometimes. And you're just gonna get smoked with everything but ten, nine.
Do you see that side?
I mean, betting forty doesn't put pressure on him with. He's able to defend his range very easily when you bet small.
Is this not new sizing?
I don't think you'll see any forty percent.
I think it's just like a geometric thing.
There's completed equity here.
Okay, the seven.
But look.
Both lead.
Plus EV to lead. Small.
Yeah, this, this line that he's taking, I see this, I do see this a lot. Bet small and if you don't raise them, they go, okay.
You gonna bluff raise? You gonna bluff raise? Bluff jam?
We want a niner at ten.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna be bluffing tins.
Actually, this is reasonable.
I feel like you might pull from nines. If you're gonna bluff, you're gonna bluff to get tins to fold.
What do you mean?
Well, so like you're gonna have hands that can ten and nine, and they're gonna have hands that can ten and ten. I think it typically pulls from the lower card when it's. Trying to get folds. So like, it's gonna pull bluffs from nine X if you're gonna bluff.
I don't think you're gonna be bluffing much in this spot at all.
No, you're probably not. You're not, I, I'm just saying like that's the general ebb and flow of that, I'm pretty sure. But I, I agree.
Time we're ripping.
With how. Yeah, so look at it. Yeah, look at. You can see the example with ace nine and ace eight here. Or no, no, ace eight's a pair. So actually, it's the other way around. Ace ten. Looks more popular. Well, ace ten's calling and you're turning ace nine into a bluff.
Yeah, that's also folding too. Right, but like. You, you just, you can get here with so few bluffs that like. You're bluffing with. King, queen, and you're bluffing with ace nine. And everything else is just a some aspect of value.
What's the difference between ace ten and king ten here?
Uh, ace has showdown versus bluffs, so like I guess some of his bluffs are gonna contain. King X, and if you have a king, you're blocking the bluffs, which just nukes any equity that you might be trying to harvest.
Okay.
He's not bluffing with better. When uh, you have a stand.
Okay, so here's one of those textures that I think you might see some big, big sizings on sometimes. The queen, ten, five, two toe. Very similar to the Jack ten, five, two toe.
So, I. I think it's gonna be different because the big blinds three bet range is so different.
Yeah, but uh, their calling range is still similar, right? They're gonna have hands that. Have a mountain of equity, no? It might be different. We saw one before you got here that was. In line with the thoughts.
Okay, so it would be a range better.
Range?
I don't know, I would bet with a spade. So, but. If you look at like here. What did I find? Like queen, six, five?
There you go.
And there was another one here.
Yeah, I mean, I would think like instead of trying to look and look at the aggregator reports and find like.
I'm looking for like high, low, low, for example.
Yeah, that, that's value.
That's what I'm looking at, and I'm trying to make a link with this, so it's kind of high, high, low with a flush draw.
Well, so form a, form a hypothesis. Why would you think that a range bet would make sense here? When you take into consideration the, the button calling range?
Well, I, I, yeah, it smashes this range, right?
Right, so what, what would a range bet accomplish? He's just gonna get a cheap turn card a lot of the time.
But our three betting range is so polarized that we have so much garbage here that I think we have to check a lot to protect our range.
Yeah, see, that's kinda how I feel. I feel like uh, you got twenty bigs in the middle right now. Which is a significant amount compared to what your stack is. So any.
You don't stab here automatically.
I wouldn't stab here, no, because any chips you put in, um, you're gonna be at risk of just nuking your equity because he's gonna jam sometimes.
I'm actually in game, I'm peer checking this hand. Uh, yeah. We just see here.
If uh, if you go into reports and you change the, the field to not flops, but uh. The uh, all. Um. Yeah, the dropdown menu on the flops, you can get.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Draft on the side, and then you're gonna be able to see where you polarize your bets from.
Hmm.
Get to the uh, the left to report swaps. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, yeah, this is good. So like, if you think about it, what would your hypothesis be for p- flops that you would be really kind of like? Polarizing on.
Can we change the sorting? This is like a headache to look at.
Yeah, so change it to based on high card. I think it's on the tab left, their flops. Uh, to the left, yeah, there. That dropdown arrow, just change it to high cards.
And you'll get like a visual representation.
Right? And so you can see the high cards that it wants to bet big on the most and the ones that it wants to check on the most.
Right, so a six makes a lot of sense as the most popular. Because it's blocking the straight, same thing with a seven on this parti- particular texture. Hmm.
Like we can go to this.
Probably going to, uh, it's probably gonna prefer spade, right? So like the six of spades is basically like the nuts here.
Yeah, now if you take this to the, the queen, ten, fives, or what, the solution that we're on. Because it's not nine, eight, five, that's the hand. We're looking at what do we bet with this queen, ten, five?
Right.
So study that spot.
So you put queen, ten, five, and my hypothesis. Would be similarly to the example we just saw, like the jack of spades is gonna be a. A really big driver of sizing. So like, it's gonna be. See, it's a lot of fifty percent, a lot of fifty percent.
What are we looking at today?
This hand needs a spade, I think.
Uh, bluffing from the, taking some of your polar combos from the big blind, and how do you play them on the flop versus a button call?
But we have lots of value with our high card queen. We want to check back our tens. Uh, we want to bet our kings and jacks. And we wanna check back our aces and worse. Right, so there's kind of four elements here. That are at work.
Yeah.
And it's full.
Pretty rare given.
We've been, I think we have to call.
Okay, so this is a little bit different of a situation. Um, I could definitely see some application like. Of a, like a range bet here, having a little more utility than the previous example. You benefit from folds.
Blah, 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 hold, hold up here. Well, we're three betting queen, seven, awesome.
Welcome to GTO Poker, Alex. Um. Yes.
I'm not that much. I, 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 I may, I maybe, I may, maybe at a practice here, but let's just see that, so, see the charts here. How, how far down?
Not at the practice, Alex, is because you're a nit.
A nit, bro. I haven't, I haven't played since NOM, bro.
Alright, so, uh, uh, before you do anything, Louis. Pull up the old poker coaching range construction and let's see what Alex's three bet from the big blind looks like.
Oh my goodness.
Pocket aces and better.
It, it will, uh, you know, you know what it would be good? It'll prove my theory that people don't three bet from the big blind correctly if they haven't studied the spot.
I don't know, sometimes I just like to get into a silly goofy mood sometimes and I'll raise queen, five off suit under the gun, but. You know, I'm three betting.
You're betting better.
So.
Depends what site you're on too, like ACR, you three bet out of the big blind, you get a fold pretty much cut off and button almost all the time.
There is no point five off. E- even.
Range.
No point five off suit from.
Alright, Alex, go ahead. What do you?
You put yourself in the Thunderdome, Alex. How are you three betting from the big blind versus a late position steal?
I'm glad you asked. I just, um. Okay, so three betting.
Here, I'll help, I'll help you out. I'll start aces, ace, ace. You can go.
Oh no, I'm, I'm, I'm calling that one.
You took the easy one, no fair.
I'm, I'm, no, seriously, I'm calling aces. And then I, I three bet kings and then queens and then jacks and tens and. Uh, not nines, we're just gonna, we're just gonna call. Just gonna call the nines.
We just want the three bet.
Just the three bets. Um, so Jack ten suited. Sounds pretty good. We're gonna call queen, jacks, so we're not gonna do that. Ace, king suited, we're three betting. Uh, ace, king off, yeah, um. Ace, ten off suit. Um. Ace, queen suited. And ace, five suited. And uh, yeah, that's about, oh wait, um, and then um, ten, eight suited, that usually works out for me. And then ten, nine suited. And that should be good.
What?
No deuces, threes, fours?
No, what, thi- this is only what I would three bet in like a live, live tournament.
Okay.
Why?
You ship.
Cause I just, I feel like I'm in a silly goofy mood, you know? It's what I, it's what I feel like. It's just what I do.
Okay, well, I, I can tell you from like a theory standpoint, it does, this, this three bet range doesn't make a ton of sense. Um, so the value portions do, but when you have a hand like Jack ten suited and you three bet and he four bet jams. How do you play? What do you do with Jack ten suited?
And you just call.
So you're just gonna ship your forty big blinds in the middle with Jack ten suited?
Um, oh wait, no, sorry, uh, no, I, I, I just fold, yeah.
Okay, so if you're just gonna three bet fold, why wouldn't you choose, when you think a hand like Jack ten offsuit would make more sense?
Uh, no, no.
Six off, or king five off, or king four off.
Yeah, I, I, I mentioned it.
We're getting there, Nick, we're getting there.
I, I mentioned him to the ledge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so like the idea is like. Your su- suited hands do really well at realizing equity. And um, when you three bet at forty big blinds, it's kind of an interesting. Um, transitional state where a lot of the response is going to be just to run your equity. You see it in like. Their four bet range, it's very four bet heavy, so it's gonna have like all the pairs and. A lot of your suited broadways and things like that are just gonna put all their chips in. And when you three bet a hand like Jack ten suited, you're just torching your equity with a very strong hand that's gonna flop well. That's why I was suggesting a hand like Jack ten offsuit would make more sense than Jack ten suited. Although Jack ten offsuit makes equally. Less sense because it also flops very well. Which is leading us in the direction that Louis is pointing down towards and Nick was alluding to. These high, low combos, these high trashy ones. Why would you three bet this over like a Jack ten suited? What is a benefit of three betting, let's say, king, five over a Jack ten suited? Just, what do you think?
Honestly, I mean, I probably wouldn't three bet at all in a live tournament, cause I'd get too scared.
Well, with regards to what you would actually do, why do you think king, five is better than Jack ten? From three betting, the, from the big blind?
Um. Probably because they don't have any fives in their range.
Well, okay, sure, but more so, like if you get four bet and you have king, five offsuit, what do you do? Well, okay, sure, but more so like if you get four bet and you have king five off suit, what do you do?
And you just fold.
Yes, not fold, easy. You don't even have to think about it. What is king? How many better hands are you getting to fold? When you three bet a hand like king five? A lot, right? Like he's gonna fold king nine off suit, he's gonna fold king seven off suit. He's just gonna have a very hard time continuing. All right, so it gets better hands to folds. It's easy to play versus a four bet. And um. What else does it do that's really good? Lots of stuff.
Right, so here we are with queen seven.
What are you bubbing about?
It blocks ace, king, king and king, king.
Oh yeah, sorry Scotty, you're right. That's where my mind was going. Yeah, you're blocking his value. Yeah, you're blocking the hands that. He's gonna continue that have you absolutely dominated, so.
Whereas jack ten does not block them.
Yeah, yeah.
And jack five does not block them.
As a live player, I hit these.
See, there you go. One who's uh who's curious about this topic specifically, I just threw a video in range chat. Every Monday night, we do a study session based on uh range construction and range interaction. And so uh. And three bet big blind from the button, forty big blinds.
Happy days. So Pete has more views on his video than subscribers, so please subscribe.
What does that tell you? It's got some loyal loyal watchers.
We're gonna have to go back and I'm gonna have to go watch that one. People who like it, like it a lot. It's great content. I really enjoy it.
Louis, we still have to show him the range.
Oh, the range.
Yeah, you can actually show him the actual range now. So see kind of what we were talking about, right? You don't see, you do see a little jack ten suited, actually funny enough, but. The general notion is suited combos are not there. And these trashy offsuit high-low combos that are blocking his value are uh. A large component that's balancing the value that you see at the top that you obviously find.
And did this stack size all the pairs?
Including aces.
Because you have such a robust range of garbage, you get to include all the value, which means aces.
Alright, well, my question to you is, are you more like fifty percent or twenty-five percent?
Oh, it's just I I would go more range betting here, kind of like uh. You're you're really just trying to get folds, so like.
I have two ideas as well, that I think you should explain. When you range bet to bet small?
Typically, yeah, you uh if you're range betting, if you're converting your entire range into a bet. The way you combat uh their defense towards that is just. And and extract extra values, just betting small with everything.
This looks like a seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
Alex, if you wanna be able to bet everything, you bet small. If you wanna be polar, bet big or check, you bet big.
Yeah, it's a if you're gonna keep everything camouflaged, your value and your absolute trash. You need to uh it's gonna be a lot easier to balance that if you just choose one sizing, which would make a lot more sense as a small bet. But you know, that being said, uh fifty percent actually makes a lot of sense here. It's not something I would have done.
We're blocking a lot of value. With straights.
Same same too.
Maybe it's because there's the presence of so many straight draws. Cause he's gonna have seven, eight, six, seven, which you're gonna continue versus small. It is polar, so well, I I say polar, but it it's. It's got thirty percent checks, which is, you know.
It's never a bad thing to small here.
That's weird, that's never betting small, except for.
So do me a favor, change the six, will you just change the six to like a four?
Let's see, fine.
Five, five is fine.
Five is the same. He's compromising.
Yeah, I don't I don't really care. Four, three, just like an air ball, really. No, it doesn't really matter. Um it's actually, it's I guess it's a function of the king and the nine, maybe, I don't know.
I know, it's still the same thing, because if you think about this calling range, this two eye card that connects with it.
Yeah, I guess what I was thinking at was there's the there's actually two gut shots here possible, so like jack ten, queen ten. And then when you have the six there, seven, eight. Is one.
Just because it's like a dry board and then I don't know, just tool the round with solvers a lot, so I I can have a. Weird sense of when it wants to spaz out for seemingly no reason.
Okay, Alex, what do you want to do now then?
Uh now, well, now it's gonna keep on wanting to spaz out. That's probably gonna go all in.
I think you're right. If there was a card to go all in with, uh. This is like the what the second best card to go all in with, I think.
We don't have diamonds, so I don't know.
That's why I said the second best, yeah.
Maybe we just check. Maybe it gives up for no reason.
We picked up equity finally.
Yeah, you don't you don't you don't bet the flop fifty percent to not put all your chips in the middle when you pick up equity.
The solver can. The solver can do whatever it wants, bro.
Uh I tell you, I do this right now, shoving with twenty big big to win forty big more. Let's go, let's do it.
Yeah, 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 I'm I'm with you. I would like to wager all my chips, please, thank you.
I guess, yeah. Uh uh I get, I I don't know. I'll I'll check, we'll say check.
Are we gonna rebuy or is it? Or we'll enter another turn.
As long as I'm able to rebuy, I'm clicking the button.
Okay, so tell you what, if it's not a good all-in, are you rebuying?
Yes.
Okay, not a good all-in.
Twenty-five percent?
And think about your tournament max.
Look at this half-hearted.
Either bet or check, yes.
We're we're just checking, bro. It wants to give up.
We give up.
It just gets like woo woo scared for no reason.
We've we've got showdown.
Now we check.
Don't think it went really well for us. He probably has a nine, right?
Man, if only we had a diamond.
Yeah.
Bro, we just, we just.
I guess agree that we have showdown now.
Well, I know.
Jack is right, but. I mean, there's a four liner and a flush on board.
Okay, so we call? No, we fold.
It's one sixth pot and we fold it.
Then, I mean, we've lost.
Jack ten. We go home with our tail between our legs.
Two pair on the flop. It's gonna show us a better hand. Okay, this seems like something you could range bet. It's gonna be difficult, yeah.
No, no, bro. What are you doing? We're checking. We're checking.
Karamba, Alex, you're killing me. Alright, why are you checking?
It just, it thinks it's it's cool.
How do you know what the solver thinks? You don't, it's a it's a it's a program. You don't know what it thinks. Why would it check?
He just, he just feels cool.
Nine is um we probably lack nine coverage, but I don't know whether it's checking. I would probably just bet.
We like to bet paired boards.
It's hard for him to connect. We've got a range advantage.
Yeah, in general, if you're the aggressor and get a paired board, just bet small.
Oh, the spade.
Yeah, I don't like the ten very much. Ten is um.
I think we're now we're checking.
I kinda, I kinda would, I think I would slow down in game. I don't know if it's good, though.
No, I'd keep firing.
Because this way, it's a three bet pot, so when we three bet, he emptied the bucket of some of his trash. And then on our flop bet, he emptied the bucket of more of his trash. Right, so he's starting to get pretty thin on trash.
Yeah, majority.
Like you can see, four point six one, we're still in good shape, but not if more money goes in this pot.
Easy check, we don't need to, I don't know if it's.
Checks good, checks, checks definitely.
Next is blocking.
Uh yeah, man, what is this?
And then he just, he just feels good. Now we're calling.
He's got eights. He's got like sevens or eights. We might have to call this, I don't know.
It's too light to call, even if he's bluffing.
The six is kind of not bad, right? Or do we wanna go even lower with the kicker? We want like ace the ace five here?
Okay, he has king five with spade in here.
The kicker doesn't matter.
No, 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 you gotta think about what bluffs you are unblocking and blocking, right? He can have six, seven. He can't have uh. Yeah, yeah, you probably call ace five because he can have six, seven, but you fold ace six.
We call and we chop.
I'm I'm calling here, I think.
Well, I think we block bluff's having a spade, so we fold.
No, no.
Look at ace five, do we do we call ace five?
We rebuy, Louis. We're rebuying.
There you go. See Danny, Danny's thinking it through.
Hey, you want your kicker to unblock their bluffs?
And the spades are folding.
I think it's also blocking value. Does he have five, four suited?
The the turn went check, check, so why do we care about spades more than diamonds or hearts?
I don't know if I do.
I don't think it matters, but the spades was one of the backdoors.
On ace six, it matters, but not on the other ones. So Danny said what? He said that the six is bad?
Yeah, the the cards between the four and the nine, the closer, like the six, seven, eight.
Look at their range. See, there's a big difference between having ace five and ace six here, right? And so. You wanna unblock that six, five, seven, six combos that he has and king, five, king, six.
Well, obviously you don't care that much about king five because you you bet the ace five pure. Yeah, why is he jamming so much?
Because you don't have a nine when you play this way? You don't really have a four when you play this way?
We checked turn and we checked river.
Yeah, so like what do you have? You have ace high? A lot? You have like. You just have a really, a really, really hard time calling.
We still have some big pairs that we checked the turn, right? We're still gonna have some.
You should, you should Pete. Yeah, that's what's protecting it. That's you should. But even those, like even if you show up here with jacks, are you really thrilled to call a jam? Like pilot pilot, let's see what jacks do. Pocket eights, pocket eights, pocket jacks. You don't really have those the way we played it.
Just kings and aces.
Yeah, which you kind of gotta call.
Yeah.
It's just a naked, naked, naked range. Alright, fifty fifty percent?
No, bro, we have to bet a little bit, just, oh, no, never mind.
Why would you bet a little bit, Alex?
Cause he can't have a king, we have the king.
So when you have a good hand, what do you wanna do with your good hands?
Well, they they just don't. They don't call, bro. They'll just fold.
What?
What we learn with the solver is it's not our hand strength that determines our bet size, but the board.
Yeah, and okay, so what's in his three bet calling range? Does he have queen ten?
That's kind of, that's kind of my thinking. It's like, okay, well, he doesn't. He doesn't have all those, all those cute little lower suited hands, so it's like.
Does he have queen ten? Does he have jack ten? Does he have nine, ten?
He'll have seven, eight spades.
You don't think he has, you don't think he has any of that?
He'll have a nine, ten?
No.
Yeah.
The solver has it.
Have ace five, think your opponent folds, come on. These guys are gamblers, man. They wanna see the flop, they're not folding. Especially button versus big blind, right? I think you have to call quite a bit on the button in theory.
But he's gonna call queen, he's playing queen ten suited.
Probably the worst card in the deck for us to see.
Not really. Not really. Just, just all in. Is that okay, Alex? Can we go all in?
Uh I don't know what we'd do.
Well, think about it.
I I don't, I don't think any amount of thinking about it will will solve that problem.
Okay, then just close your eyes and put the chips in.
There you go. No, that's unfortunate. Whoever said that was the worst card in the deck, uh.
I did.
Yeah, they weren't.
Yeah, well, two pairs and fills in a gut shot, right? Like, oh.
Alright, we got vulnerable strength here on a dryish board with no draws.
But it's promising, right?
This should mix two and five. I agree.
I was gonna say fifty percent is what I was thinking, but yeah, that's uh twenty-five is good.
Let's drop fifty.
I guess you just put your chips in or do you ever, okay, so you have like your weakest king, one of your weakest kings. Do you ever put this in a check range now?
No.
Okay.
No.
Maybe a little.
You put it in this like half.
You wanna check uh ace king, right, or no?
Weak a little bit, you you bet off.
You put in those silly, that silly size a little bit.
Do we, do we trap ace king here at all?
No.
No?
Check.
I don't think.
If we had stacks for three, three bets post-flop, I think maybe, yeah. But went into two, two bet game post-flop, I think this smaller king still go with it.
Got you.
Oh, we call? Oh, we finally win. Happy days. Let's celebrate.
Yeah, the nature of the rainbow turn is just gonna make it hard for him to continue, so we just get that small there.
Yeah, that makes sense, Pete. What do you wanna do here?
Five.
Oh my god. Maybe fifty percent?
Okay.
Parking the auto folds.
Bet off, but you wanna get auto folds. Is that it?
Auto, okay, so if you're gonna bet quarter with a hand like is vulnerable, that has like no showdown, like jack high. Just looking at the other, other scenarios. Um. I think you probably wanna slot this into like a fifty percenter sometimes.
Uh one and done?
Yeah, well, it's like, I don't think this is a range bet texture anymore. I think it's gonna have some. Some checking components, and if it has checking components, I wanna slot these type of hands into fifty percent.
No, we're just gonna bet five.
And you wanna one and done?
Yeah, well, okay, so if a ten hits, you're probably going with it, like the ten of spades.
Okay, what else?
Bet five, why not?
Five's good, check's good.
So I was thinking, just check, check. Take a look at the range as a whole here.
And then we have the ace. Now, my friend.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, with three betted, so yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And we get here, we get the smaller size because of the rainbow nature of the turn. He's gonna. Remember when he calls our three bet, he's gonna fold a lot of offsuit stuff and call with a lot of suited stuff. So on this turn, when he doesn't pick up a value with a better card with an ace. He's gonna not pick up equity with all his flush draws and is gonna have to have more give ups.
Yeah, all the back doors bust with the flush, yeah.
So you double gyro.
Double gyro.
I don't even know if the ace is even good for us either, right?
Yes, it is. Can you do? Uh can you do like nine, uh put nine, bet nine and then let him raise and then look what we should.
Cause he's gonna have just as many aces as us.
Yeah, I think it's a full buck.
Nah, we actually have more aces, Arnie, because he's for betting a lot of his aces.
And now probably it's just a check give up.
We block ten jack.
So we.
So sometimes.
Oh my god.
Somehow I don't think we we bet on the turn just to give up on the river. I think we just need to rebuy.
Sure, I'm not sure.
If we ask ourselves, how do we get ourselves in this position with the jack six offsuit and the big blind?
What is he folding? Name a hand that folds.
He's not folding anything.
Exactly.
We had a hand, we got to river four and had to fold to this ten into sixty.
Okay, maybe five, four, maybe he's folding five. He's he doesn't have five, four, five, four diamonds, maybe, I don't.
Alright, just just check and give up then.
King jack.
Yeah.
The ten big blinds, man, which is better off to just rebuy and get.
You can.
We can we can grind back up. We can grind back up. We'll just like go all in on the button with like ten, four offsuit. It'll be fine.
This only has to work like. For this to be profitable, it doesn't have to work very often.
Yeah, it never it never has to work.
This will never work.
If he had a draw that rivered an eight, he's probably gonna fold it here.
Yeah, it's it's never gonna work. It's not happening.
Okay.
So are we going for it?
No.
I'm curious, but you you're going for it?
I think we have to almost.
I'll just grind back up for my Ted big blinds.
He's gonna show us jack ten.
Yeah, check ten is straight, that's right.
To go or not to go?
Not to go.
You got you're blocking a you're blocking a straight, whatever. Put your chips in.
I'm scared.
Are you allowed to bet one big blind?
No give ups.
Yeah.
And he calls us, of course, and then he's got, what has he got? King, queen, shocker.
I mean. But we're gonna get revenge here.
Okay, now I get it. All right, I think I get it now. We bet nine point nine five.
I like it, Alex. I'm gonna support that decision.
Nine, five?
Oh, no, I was right the first time.
It does some, but I mean, the the primary frequency is a quarter.
I'm never listening to you again, Gailen.
I just said I agree with you. Yeah, you're the one driving the boat, man.
You you can't agree with me anymore.
Yeah. No, no trust of.
All right, bet small again.
No, now we have to bet. Now we have to bet fourteen. We want to get our stacks in. Wait, no, sorry, that wouldn't be it. We'd have to go all in. Oh, look at that.
Okay.
Alex is right.
I feel like you're just barreling into better hands.
Sneaky, not even four betting the kings.
You know, how how many big blind per hundred we've lost here since?
All of them.
It's crazy. We're in like the stack torching factory.
Yeah, it's tough to play against GTO opponents, but it's really easy to play against people who overfold.
That's true. I kind of like a bet. I kind of like a bet here.
Five?
Yeah, I think I would bet small. I guess. I don't know, to be honest. I'm not sure about this one.
Give me five?
Yeah, five or nine.
Or give me nine.
They're both reasonable.
We touch five.
This feels like something you might continue to barrel with. Yeah. Eight, nine gets there, though, is the problem.
Twenty five point eight.
Check, give up.
No, twenty five point eight. Or or seven point five. And those are my two options. Final answer, lock in.
Check in here.
Final jeopardy.
Why are they on the double gyro, Alex?
Um, I just, it just feels like that's what the solver is leading us to do. It either wants us to get a little. Seven point five in so we can set up the jam or um we just go all in now.
What? But you got nothing, right?
We block nothing. We have nothing.
It's just it just seems like it doesn't care. That's what it's trying to get us to do this time. I don't know why.
I usually when we pick up equity, we get the double barrel. But the problem I see with this is we were. The equity we picked up is a gut shot to the idiot end of the street.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah. You guys are probably right. Just seems like that's what the tell us.
It's probably gonna go check, check and then reevaluate on the river. That'd be my guess, because we do have showdown now. We're ahead of his king, queen, king, jack. You know.
You guys are some smart cookies.
Yeah, if our opponent has a hand like a seven or a six, we can try and realize equity here.
Oh.
We we still can't fold.
What are you doing, Louis?
I think.
What are you doing? You were obviously going to hit the seven and then jam.
Old.
I think we probably can fold now.
Think I save one. How is it that when we three bet him, he always adds?
I don't know. Does he? I don't think he's gonna fold sixes, even if we go half pot there either, right? On the flop.
No.
God, no.
I don't think he can fold a pair.
All right, we just have a little a little check or a little silly goofy twenty five percent bet.
Yeah, okay, twenty five percent seems good.
I think we check more with this.
Yeah.
Jack eye rainbow? Why you want to check here? Because it connects too well with the.
Jack nine rainbow. I think jack nine, jack ten, we slow down a little bit sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right. Well, now what? You fold?
Just, yeah.
You floating?
We're for sure folding ace and spades here.
Hopefully, it's a little, just a little too too bad. I just say we call.
I don't know, but I'm not floating here.
And now we give her a little check. We'll check her check. And now uh now we fold.
We needed to turn a spade. We needed to turn a wheel card.
You were gonna love the outdoor flush.
Oh, my god. All right, we're not afraid of anything, so we have to bet twenty five percent.
King, queen, we bet large, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think I agree there too. This could be a fifty.
Mean that this one falls into a check?
I just, I think we want him to call with the cards we don't block. We want to give a little, just a little, little tempting bet there.
You want to be something here, but the thing is, there's so much connectivity. Think about jack ten, ten line. Spades, hearts, uh, a hand like, I don't know, ace ten.
Worst kings.
By that logic, just go all in.
There are no worse kings.
Just jam that.
Just saying if you guys are paying attention, that's all.
There is one worse king.
I think you're seventy five person.
I think it's.
Jam, Louis. Do it. All in.
I think you fold it is.
We've got a good blocker. We got a spade.
It's still checking, just wait.
It's betting big.
I know, it's checking and betting five.
Okay.
No, we bet big. What are you talking about?
No, this isn't a big bet board.
Exactly. That's a bet small board. It's a nice sideboard, a little bit dry. He has an ace or no. The six doesn't it? Doesn't change, right? Doesn't change much.
We're gonna hit our runner, runner. Just just.
We don't need one runner. We just one runner does it.
What do you think, Pete?
This, like this spot here, we're gonna want to be pretty careful because. He's gonna have a lot of aces in range and we don't want the pot to get inflated to the point where we have to fold the king of spades here. And we have showdown with the six in a small pot.
Oh, I missed. I missed the six. That would be an important detail.
Yeah, like we have, we have some elements that really don't want to big that that don't want to play for thirty more bigs right now.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Pete. I like a I like a small bet on the flop here. I don't think you really accomplished too much by going big, big, big.
We have to protect our pair, bro.
No, it's not about that. The pair doesn't count here.
I'm I'm kidding. That's is the boomer mentality.
I think this is close to a range bet on that board.
Yeah.
So I would probably bet very small or check. The reason that you bet small with this combo is that now all the single spades and uh. Are are gonna start folding and you're going to realize the equity more of your six. And you block the backdoor flush completing.
You block the spade and then.
Yeah, I like the check here.
I don't see merit for double generally.
Okay.
Not on not on this card necessarily. It's a pretty big Gerald.
Go, king, jack.
All in.
If you are gonna Gerald.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, yes, we shut.
That check that line.
So kickers play here. So I don't know, I might play check shove here.
Oh, we just uh give a little check. A little checkeroni. Why would you? Just give a little checkeroni.
Push to the limit. Oh, no.
Oh, wow, Louis. Look at that. I was right.
Give a chance to bluff.
Yeah.
What's that saying about broken clocks being right?
Never heard of.
All right.
And then just call, oh, no.
No.
They wanted to do it the other way. I mean.
We we have two pair in a pot that started less than. As pure of two.
He folded his king, queen.
That's a monster.
He would have called our all in.
Yes.
Uh, I can call him with withism.
So?
Fifty percent? No, it's not enough connected. It's five per twenty five percent that I think.
I I agree with uh Mister Sid Hibs.
Sid Hibs.
Sid Hibs.
Yeah, when he wants to go small, he's usually right.
Small is uh. Small makes a lot of sense here.
There's not a lot of dangerous turn cards here. Want to get value. Safe card, double jarl.
You going double, double small?
Yeah, like rainbow turn. It's just gonna be hard for him to continue.
Rainbow deuce, right? He he's gonna continue with everything.
So Pete, you say when it's a rainbow card, tough for him to continue, it's gonna go small?
Yeah, well, it 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 drives it towards going small because. His hands, a lot of his suited hands that are backdoor equity are just gonna have a hard time continuing here.
We just get rid of the flows, basically.
Yeah. Six, seven of diamonds, his king, four of hearts. Right? Like we're crushing those hands. They they're drawing the three outs.
You want him to call?
Yeah.
And then push?
Um, yeah. Nothing else to do.
Except lose the kings.
Again.
If we get this joy in this node. Jeez.
Yeah.
This is.
About the button again.
This is a deceiving deceiving board. Like we picked up some equity, but it's also like a blank board, so I'm torn between like. Sizing up and going really small here.
I'll go seventy five person.
I see, it's kind of I I I'm kind of there too, a little bit. But I don't know if you need to, because you're gonna you're gonna disguise a lot of your weak, trashy hands on a board like this, right? I would think.
None of the range, none of the range shit, so much of this board, so.
I don't like the two.
Definitely not two. I would say it's either, yeah. Five or big, but. Five makes sense, and I think five makes sense, even though we picked up a little bit of equity, because I think a lot of your range is gonna go to this size.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pushing the overpair advantage here, where we just have more bigger overpairs than our opponent does.
Hmm, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so the ten is actually a deceivingly good card, just because. When you bet small in the flop, he's not continuing with jack ten, queen ten, king ten really too much. So. You're blocking ace ten. I like a double barrel here.
No, we we check. It's terrible for us.
Why is it terrible?
He has all the tens.
Does he? How many tens does he have when you bet the flop?
Ten, four suited.
He calls with ten, four suited.
Why not? You just said he was the big gambler. He's calling with all kinds of suited cards, so.
Feel like you're talking nonsense on purpose.
But but he starts with calling all of the suited cards from the top, so he's gonna start with king, queen suited here. Right? Then ace, jack suited. And so by the time he gets down to like, you know, ten, four suited. That's really far down, so it's just much more likely that he has. Queen, jack, there is a chance he's gonna have like king ten here.
So we're going with the big torch right into king?
I thought that he folded. I thought he folded ten, four suited pre-flop.
He does, Scotty. That's the funny part. He does.
No, but he's but. That was just what Alex said. I was from what uh.
A king ten he is gonna have here.
I'm kind of I'm kind of torn Lu- Louis, like you don't have the spade, so you want to add a little gas. For the combos, I I don't think he's folding a flush draw. Maybe he does fold a flush draw if you jam. Um, I don't know. I kind of like going small again. Yeah, I I that's where I'm at too, Pete. Small, small.
Small, small.
Now, like, okay, so we would just walk through the logic of why the ten is actually a deceivingly good card for us. Now, if you change the ten to like, say, a queen. You're gonna start seeing this betting range evaporate in favor of checking.
Yeah, particularly queen of one of the flush draws.
What if it's a king?
Even worse, you're gonna even check more. I think as the card approaches an ace. Um, you're gonna just start seeing more and more checking.
Why that's again? Why?
Our range is checking forty five percent, but our hand isn't checking very much.
Well, that's but this hand specifically is because you have the gut shot.
But this hand didn't check. Oh, no, it did check the other one. It did everything.
But now you can see that it's using the bigger sizing more off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just speaking like more from a range perspective than like this actual combo. But uh, i- it's because uh he's continuing with. Queens and kings, Roger, on the flop versus small bet. So like his backdoor, his king, queen of hearts is not folding to a small bet on the flop. Um.
So you you will hit a pair there when the queen or a king comes.
More frequently, yeah, more frequently.
But we also have that, the king and queen, aren't we?
Some, yeah, we do some.
Okay, but he has more.
We have we have the same amount of kings and queens, but what we're trying to get value with is our nines plus. Right? Nine, tens, jacks, queens, kings, aces, where he just has a lot less of that.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
He seems to have a lot of kings. Today.
Everything.
All right, we're torched.
We're rebuying.
You're gonna hit a three.
Calling this. No.
So what are his bucks gonna come from?
Yeah.
Peter, whatever you say, I'm not gonna call.
Peter, you're speaking very theoretically sound, but in game, uh, in game, this is just gonna be like. He's gonna make a mistake with pocket tins here. He's gonna say I improved to a full house and I'm all in.
I bet. Yeah, he has a big uh uh products to do this.
See sevens? Look at that psycho. You see any psychos in game?
Doing that with sevens?
I am.
Yeah, but you're crazy.
I want to become a psycho. I want to become the psycho that shoves with sevens.
Hello, it is me.
Psycho?
What's it like, Arnie? What's it like being psychotic?
I don't know. My last psychotic outbreak, I I got called with first and then they spiked on the turn with their twelve percent equity.
Oh, queen eight, queen eight. I don't mean to open old wounds, Arnie, but queen eight.
Played chippy V on an ICM pool. That's what happened.
And I made the chip leader spaz and punt and he got. He got uh, he got there.
He got there.
In the worst way possible.
So dirty.
Huh.
That's bad. How much you want?
Uh, I like a small bet here. Like, I feel like you're just miles ahead with your value. Nope, check. Look at this, check.
Yeah.
Well, probably because we don't have a spade. We might bet more if we had a spade, I think.
Yeah, maybe that's good. Maybe that's good intuition.
No spade. King of spades there, we might, we might be betting.
Yeah, that's the driving factor. You need the king of spades. Even the seven of spades is kind of like.
And the king of spades, that's big.
Slow your roll.
Yeah, so here we're gonna have lots of value that's gonna check, because we're gonna check a lot of queens. So our range is gonna have a lot more checks by nature, and so we're we're a little protected with our terrible king. So our range is gonna have a lot more checks by nature, and so we're, we're a little protected with our terrible king.
Hmm.
And we're now folding our terrible king.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have lots of better hands to continue here, this is a fold.
Okay, similar situation, um, in game, I'm betting very small, like I'm betting like ten percent here sometimes.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
Whoa, whoa. Whoa. Come on.
This is, actually wait, no, we have the king of clubs, nevermind.
But I could see, I could see value in checking, but I in game, I'm betting like ten percent here a lot.
I'm betting twenty-five.
I don't hate twenty-five, I think twenty-five is very fine.
I prefer his ten.
So. If you had an ace. How is someone gonna call on a rainbow board with two aces? Like you, you just gotta give him more rope.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's just a really efficient, like this is a very scary board, it's a very efficient bet, because. When he doesn't have something, he can't continue with like. What's he gonna hold on to? Is he gonna hold on to like jack ten of clubs here? On, on, on that flop? Probably not. Maybe versus ten percent he does. But.
We bet this turn, probably not, right?
You bet small, um. You're either gonna like continue very small. Like for two point four, or you're gonna check.
What's the logic within, behind double barreling?
Just cheap bluffs, man. Yeah, it's just gonna be hard for him to continue with hands that didn't pick up equity, I mean, I guess the nine does come, like bring in some stuff, but. If he's got like. King ten of diamonds here, he's gonna have a hard time.
Not convinced. Sorry.
Check's good, I think check's good, I like check. Alright, what are you gonna do now?
Wow. How could he? How could he check?
We beat jack ten, we beat. Jack ten.
Because he knows we're gonna, we're gonna punt it off here. He's just gonna check back his ace on the, on the turn, right?
I kinda wanna value bluff.
You know what I'm thinking here? If we jam, we're gonna get a better king to fold.
You're right.
Happy days.
If you jam, he's gonna show you an ace sometimes.
No, no, no.
He's gonna call us with an ace or a queen, yeah.
Value bluff, that means like really cheap bluff, not all in. Yeah, your read was correct though, a hundred percent correct.
Alright.
That's small.
Uh, ace high with some connectivity in the suits.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
I like a small bet. Uh, it wants to go half, half seas.
Yeah.
Ooh, check, we can check call one.
We have showdown, check.
Double flush draw. But.
Yeah, no, we're good, we're good. Let's see if he really, really has an ace or no.
And check. We're protected, we still have pocket kings here, pocket queens here. Easy game.
I think uh, continues with this one.
The aces.
It was fifty and it's uh.
Okay, I don't know what I'm doing here. Why are you guys sizing up?
It's eight high, I don't mind sizing up over here, you're blocking pocket nines, which would wanna size up, you have. Spade equity moving forward, I could see like a lot of Meriden sizing up here.
Yeah.
But we were sizing up on two or three high card with a flush draw.
Yeah, but it's a connected board, so you have to size up.
This one.
I gotta scroll.
Well, we do have seven six in our, our three betting range as well too, right?
It doesn't connect well with his calling range, I think that's it.
Yeah, that's probably it.
He has five, six, six, seven, seven, eight, doesn't he?
Not. Really? Yeah, but. He does, he does. But. Still very, very slim, he's like king ten, queen ten, jack ten. So if it's between like an, an eight and a jack, like it smashes his ring. But this here, I don't think so.
Alright. Well, we sized up. And he had exactly what we wanted. We were ahead.
Gotta see that here Scotty, what size?
We saw this a second ago.
Right, on pair boards we bet big.
Not necess- not necessarily, this is like a blankboard also, like pair deuces is kind of a, a special case. So like no one really has anything, no who, no one has deuces. So it's like blank blank instead of pair pair.
Yeah. And blank blank, uh.
Small?
I would go small, I think you can just be very efficient with your bet sizings here, oh, well, it goes big, it goes big.
I wouldn't point out, it was fifty percent of that.
Yeah, 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 you're right. It's definitely fine. I wonder if you, maybe it's a, maybe if it was a rainbow thing.
I feel like when the, the, the card on the board is low, it doesn't hit this range, so you have to bet the bigger.
I would like to not give up. I have picked up equity and I would like to continue to bet.
All of it?
No, I don't want to bet all of it, so that means I have to bet nine point nine five. Said I wanna bet. That's too small. I would like to have more choices. And I don't have them, so.
Position with a ten six offsuit.
More choice, Danny.
The choices is shove.
I know those are my choices, so I've done the wrong one, okay. It's check, just check.
White flag.
I don't wanna check.
White flag.
Right, and now I have to fold. Even with my gut shot. And I folded to, to nonsense.
Savage.
Yeah, that's crushed.
I like how I played the hand, how the solver told me to play the hand. He folded that to my jam.
Yeah. Okay, ace high board, I think it's easy to bet small, right?
I think so. Uh, huh.
Not great, not bad.
I think we probably just uh, put the brakes on.
No. I don't know, I think we keep barreling here, I think we're gonna have more fives in range than he will.
You might, you might, I mean, that's an okay argument, I guess, I.
Cause I guess, cause we were taking a lot of our bluffs with king five, queen five.
This is a double gyro.
Yeah.
We get rid of.
I don't like it, but I could, I could see it being very good. Oh, checking. It's big, two percent or check.
JK.
And fold. And fold.
And.
And it's.
Yeah, nice. He's never folding there.
Bet fifty percent.
Yeah, fifty is the best, why?
Because this is one of the boards that we bet fifty percent on, and what is it about the board? It's two tone, which pushes our bet size up. It's, there's no completed equity, which pushes our bet size up, it's nine high, which is not in, which is, which is not a ten jack or queen.
Do you have vulnerable strength also, like?
Might be better.
Strength also.
All good reasons, I think.
Like.
Yep, see. Alex, take notes, that's how you walk through a hand logically, Scotty can't argue with the man.
Yeah.
And.
Alright, this is a show. Push.
Uh, it's a clean one, I think.
I just talked about logic and I see so many wrong guesses.
Push it.
Shoves it.
He's gonna kill us.
Shoving to his kings.
Kings again, nope, queen jack.
We did it. We won a hand.
Did he go with this?
Nobody's continuing with queen jack there on that board.
Not for sure. How small do we bet?
Uh, you don't bet two, I think you bet five.
Why not two? Cause it's a deuce?
Um. It's not like condensed around your value range, the jax are relatively contested card, but I mean, it's gonna be hard to continue, like, but. If you bet, if you bet two, he's still gonna continue with like. I don't know, his flush draw, his backdoor flush draws, his three, three straight cards. I think you have to give it a little, a little more gas than uh, than two.
And you gave it a lot of gas, it's a fifty percenter.
Maybe because it's a pair board.
The, the five is fine, but.
Fifty percent. It's a pair board, most of the thing is gonna have nothing right now.
I do gotta say, it's uh, quite an interesting foreshadowing, having this subject on the Friday before the Sunday home game.
Is that bluffing?
It's at kids.
Yes, I'm gonna three bet you, Arnie.
Oh, are we doing, is it a home game Sunday?
The Arnie. You're not gonna get a single.
Yeah, we're reviving the home game, Scotty.
Oh, good.
Don't bluff me, I don't fold.
Say, would you say Scotty doesn't know about the home game?
Scotty doesn't know. And I'm not.
Yeah, you just got posted in what chat, but.
Okay.
It's everywhere.
It's new, it's new, like, you know, you gotta give the guy, if, if you don't live on Discord, you might not know.
Look at this.
Look at all those beautiful mugs.
Cool, man. Nice. Everybody's in the.
Click on that and see what time it is.
Look at all those hotties.
Look at all those beautiful.
And those random girls.
So.
Mister man, well, leave my sister, leave my sister out of this.
This is Danny. This is the fish. This is Kenneth Keppel. This is George. This is, I don't, I don't know if I wanna give out his name.
You're gonna dox my face, man?
Yeah, dox.
And not, not even introduce me?
Yeah. This is Galen. He's happy, look. Uh, this is Nick.
That's him after four bet bluffing the guy.
Proud of myself.
After getting a four bet bluff too, he's like the happiest.
Nick after jamming river.
That's after he checks with the nuts.
Nick look likes, Nick looks like he's about to sell you some really quality insurance.
Yeah.
Nick looks like he's a groomsmen.
You're a groomsmen, yeah.
We have duly. We have all the famous Jared Chan here.
One only.
And this is Said.
Said looks like he owns a sports car, a foreign sports car.
And if you're not. Said, he looks like he's trying to sell me a course.
He looks like, yeah, he looks like uh, one of the FX traders or something.
Alright, if you're not in here, consider sending me a picture of you or adding me on Facebook. Right.
I don't have ACRs, not able to play. Too bad.
Sad.
Too bad.
Two P M.
Need to drive to your uh, to Belgium so you can get in.
On ACR.
Yeah, maybe next year.
Relocate Rogers, make sure he plays it. We got bounties on uh, the head of everyone, including Evan Jarvis.
Uh-huh.
And then happy days.
So is it a bounty for each time you're eliminated, Louis, or is it just the first time?
We, for us, it's a freeze out.
Okay.
For you guys, it's an unlimited rebuy one dollar.
Oh. How, how big is the bounty on your head?
Twenty-five dollar.
Oh, I had stats there, yeah. So N A C R, yeah?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Nice.
I'm gonna get Louis' bounty, that's the one I want.
It's the main bounty.
There is no way I'll play a single pot against Pete. Pete's gonna be like.
Wait, wait until the bad lights out to uh, Peter.
Pete, it's always the same thing, I'm on the turn with him and he checks. And then uh. You don't wanna play with Pete.
You bluff, you win.
Just, you can play every, anyone else. You know? Just take the easy road, don't play with Pete.
Path of least resistance.
Yeah, exactly.
Caps that he's playing every hand.
Now we bet two.
Yeah, yeah, I like two here, I think two's good, two or five.
Five, minimum.
It mainly a five, but two's good, I feel like if the nine was like a, a jack or a queen, it would start shifting.
Yeah.
Hmm. And go for a little, little checkaroonie. Maybe a small bet.
I don't like the check.
It's gonna be a fifty.
Just a little five.
I mean. How many more decisions are there to make other than purple?
I would double jarl, no?
Uh, I mean. Okay, but you still do have to be a little cautious, it's not like you.
I like the small.
You got the S S paid here.
What would you wanna do with uh, with a jack? Or like uh, queen ten, no, you don't have queen ten, uh.
Queen ten or baron. King four or baron.
We have a lot of. You don't really wanna jam, right? We have a lot of heads in our value component that just got reduced in their strength. And so our range is gonna wanna check a lot, like when we have a jack, we're gonna wanna check a lot here, and when we have kings and queens, we're gonna wanna check a lot here.
Okay, so let me ask Pete, if.
That's reasonable too.
If one of our components goes more towards checking, where's the other one go?
Pull her in.
Peter got me, he made me check.
Dude, checking's insane, this is never a check, but there is a lot of checks.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna say.
Sometimes your, your wild opponents will be like, oh, an ace, he checked, I'm all in.
Yeah.
And you just, you just get him.
Okay, so.
Against uh, a specific tag, okay, a, a specific tag color, sure, I could get behind that.
So it's not small, but it's not all in either, it's the, the half pot.
Well, for whatever reason, it's not choosing all in at all. At all. So.
This is more efficient.
I guess, I don't know, it's odd, I, I.
He's not checking a jack either, it like, it's betting most of its jacks.
See, this is silly stuff that I can't just like, I can't navigate through this, like why it would prefer this size over jamming, like what the benefit is. Is that Ken eating a steak? Who is that?
No, it's Scotty.
Scotty.
Scotty!
Get, get this guy a bounty.
You're hungry, you're out there trying to get some lunch.
I'm hungry for chips.
Eating the fish.
Yeah, I like this picture, it's, it's pretty funny.
I got another one for you. You're gonna love this one.
All in. Now we check some.
Why, why would you check there?
Because the spade, the flush bricked and he has blocked some of this flushes there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And we did check. Because we're still betting like kings and queens and jacks on the turn. Right, he's. Uh, we have some folds.
Yeah. Welcome to bluff.
It's the name of a church. The church. Love first in a, in an area called like, like New Bluff or something, you know, the, the, whatever the town is.
That guy, that guy's definitely got a balanced range.
I go all in here?
It's a fifty.
Fifty, yeah. All in seems a bit ambitious, I would say fifty percent.
Where are all the all ins we saw? They're gone.
And now there's a whole.
One gyro here or check or all in, I don't know.
You know, this is an interesting one, because everything got there. Nine, ten got there, all the flushes got there, he's gonna have some better jacks, but. I don't think you get to check, checking seems crazy.
When the flush completes and you're the three better, it's good for him. So a lot of our range is checking there. I think.
Maybe you do check. I'm never checking, I don't think I, you could look through my entire database and I don't think I have a spot where I checked here in a spot like this.
Check or jam? Jam?
I only want to keep the bluffs. Yeah, and we have uh.
Now we have an easier route.
Now uh.
Well, he doesn't have many offsuit hands, right?
That five.
That five.
Five, yeah. Oh, yeah. Not really.
JK, just kidding.
Need jams, and we, yeah, I don't know.
Please?
I'm folding in game here.
But purple, they don't play like this over most of the time.
Exactly. Um, I kind of like a small bet, but maybe it goes fifty percent. I don't think I used enough fifty percent in game, to be honest. Um, that kinda hurts, I'm probably folding.
You got the spade, you got the street, you can't.
Okay, it's like indifferent theory land, like maybe you're calling theory land, but I'm folding in game.
Always. It's not folding. Okay, you don't even need to call her. Oh my goodness, is that Scott?
You got a man in blue, Scotty?
Yep, that's me.
Scotty, man, you are an extremely photogenic person, you. Dude, these are great photos.
Louis said he wanted photos.
This is good, man.
Bro, it said, eat me, you weren't actually supposed to eat it.
Yeah, I like those glasses. It's good.
Alright, I'm done with photos.
Alright, you wanna bet here?
I would like at some point for us to be in the value portion of our range in this exercise.
It's not gonna happen today.
Oh, it's not. We are not folding.
Are we not?
Call at least.
Okay, do we leave? No. Okay, we call, hold on to the ten?
Big size. It's gross.
We did pick up equity.
Oh.
That's how you do it.
Yeah, actually, the, the jam makes sense now, I think about it.
Yeah, it, it's too, it's too big a bet to call. We just gotta punt.
Why nine?
So he's gonna have lots of straight interaction between the king and the nine to continue. And he's gonna have lots of straight interaction between the nine and the six to continue. So he just has a lot of very natural continues, so we get to go for big value.
Fair enough.
Ooh, we get to lose big value. Not folding.
Oh my, and what a shocker, he has the nuts.
Again, fifty percent. Got a god shirt and he don't did this board much often. With his counsel.
One of the three cases that we saw when we were looking at the reports, this was one of the three, there was three cases. One of them was three high card with a flush draw connected. One of them was one high, two low. And one of them was these boards, which one was these boards? The bed bigs, right?
When it gets this low, we bet big.
They're all in boards. This is the other case of figure. You can go all in here.
Or he can go all in and we fold. No, screw you. This is a bad call.
King in our hand.
This is a bad call.
I'm gonna mark the software fish for this one.
Yeah, right click, green.
Yeah, exactly. We had the five on the river.
Did we?
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
I wanna check here. What do you guys?
Ten eight, completed equity, flush draw board, very dangerous.
I have fifty percent, no choice, I'm checking.
No, this is not a fifty percent.
Kind of no idea.
We don't have a spade.
Yeah, this spot, we're gonna be super polar in, we're gonna have huge bets with ace, king, ace, queen and king, queen. And we're gonna have lots of checks.
We saw this type of board as one of the three case figures, three high card that are connected with a flush draw.
I saw the board with this.
This is our massively checked board.
Yeah.
I think ace, king and ace, queen can jam here.
Yeah, definitely.
Queen of spades, we probably betting a little.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we have jams on this board.
I think we have.
Oh yeah, all the single spades.
Look at them all.
With jam or nothing.
Yeah, it's, it's just a super polar spot, right? So you can see it's pulling the, the bluffs from like ten, nine, nine, seven.
Call.
Easy call? What are you doing?
We picked up equity.
Pick up equity?
Jam, all in. No way.
Port is so good for our range, like he shouldn't be betting very often here.
I go all in on this one. No.
Clickbacks. Is to fold? Yeah, we can give up here.
Cause it's more interesting. And it's in the range, now, now you're.
No.
Guess we might have some calls because we don't block spades. But we still don't maybe beat any of his buffs.
I know, no cry is calling there.
I don't understand why you fold uh, uh, no, no, a double got shot, the straight draw on this one.
You know?
Yeah, king and nine gives you the, the string. You, you got so, so much equity in the ace, it's so much your board and. Yeah, your range that uh.
One more time, we don't fold.
What's my plan, Eric? Uh, no, it's Eric. When I three bet, pre-flap with point six. My plan is to get a fold, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Doesn't fold, okay, here we are on the flop, pretty bad flop, so bad. That on a spot where I bet all the time, I can't bet anymore, sure, fine. He bet super small, he rips me off too big, but fine. Turn is an ace. Okay? Do you know how many ace he defends? When, when I three bet him. You know how much aces he has here? Yeah, big couple. So when the ace comes. Okay? He either has a jack already, a nade, a hand like king, queen, uh, ace ten. Uh, some, that beats me, okay, I'm beaten from all sides when the ace comes, and I don't have it. And anyway, my plan was just to bluff him earlier. And now here we are, and it ju- it didn't work, right? So the, uh, the faster you assess that your bluff didn't work. Uh, the more money you're gonna save.
Louis, go back to the, go back to that range. When you wanted to brag about how many aces he has, rather than roll over the fact that he has every suited ace. Roll over his big aces, because there are three times as many of those, so that, there's actually more aces there than there are. And the, the offsuit branch is more than the suited branch in this example.
Yeah, but it's just a general idea, nah.
And I'm just saying, between ace eight and ace king, there are, there are about uh fifty percent more than there are between ace, king and ace deuce.
And which ones are betting flop?
And then. Look, you still are, it's still.
Oh, we didn't, oh, we didn't uh, you didn't uh, they weren't proportional, nevermind.
And now they are, so you see.
Now, he got, no, he has more of those, you're right.
Has plenty of aces. And if you think your queen is good, your gut shot, look at his range, he has a bunch of queens too, he doesn't care. Has queen coverage and his queens are better than yours, cause he has a queen ten and queen jack or queen eight.
Yeah, his bluffs that he bluffs the turn with are also gonna be spades a lot, so when we get the queen of spades or the uh.
So we uh, we only have six, six good outs.
For me, my spider sense are just like you're torching here, man, nah, stop.
But we have, we, we still have the kings is out, we still have the nines is out. And as it turns out, against his hand, we had the queen is out.
So I don't think we call many queens, man. Like queen eight, with a pair. Right? Or when we black the front, front door flash. But it's like zero E V, all of it, right? And when you call it a queen here, you're making zero out of zero out of zero. Gonna hit your, your, your nose against the wall when you call, if you play too many queens here. Uh, okay, I wanna keep some time to review hands, so thanks a lot for, for coming by, everybody. See you around next week.